I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council for today, August, Tuesday, August 27th, 2024. We'll start the meeting off with having a moment of silent prayer. Please join me in stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's so nice to see you here tonight. I'm sorry we got started a few minutes late. As you may have read, we had a joint council meeting with Bristol, Tennessee at 5:00 PM and it ended just before six, just enough time to get us over here. So, had to get everything up and running. But, thank you all for being here. I think we've got a good, action-packed agenda tonight to go through. Just a few comments. I know school is back in session for the city, but also our private schools in the city. It's good to see all the kids back in school and all the activities going on from all the ballgames starting up and all the events. So, I'm looking forward to attending a lot of those. I did want to make one note. I know that you all probably saw on the news where BVU will be having a rate increase because TVA approved that hike, increase in rates. And if you have any questions or concerns about that, we ask that you call BVU. At the city, we cannot answer questions pertaining to that. And I know we've received a few calls. So, please call BVU if you have any questions or concerns related to that rate increase. So, at this time, I will open it up and for any other council comments.
Just to reiterate what you mentioned about the upcoming high school fall sports season, high school football, we have some other big events coming up too, such as Rhythm and Roots, the Bristol Race will be in town. So, it'll be a busy September over the next few weeks. So, just be mindful as there's more folks in town for some of those special events.
And just to add to that, this past Friday, the high school had the Meet the Bearcats, their fall version of that. They'd attempted to do it the week before and I think most of us were there for that, but it got rained out. So, Friday night, they had all the sports teams, the band, everybody come out. They were cheered, celebrated. They just got a nice loud crowd for them there. So, it was cool to see. And then, that same night, our boys scrimmaged Gate City, beat them pretty well. It was a good game. Gate City used to be a powerhouse and we took them down. So, that was good. And then also, our volleyball team had a win this week as well. So, I'm probably missing a win because our kids are on fire, but I'm doing good.
Yep, very good.
It may not be located in the city of Bristol, Virginia, but King University just had the grand opening of their new track yesterday. And I know they're really excited for that. It's one of the few world-class tracks in this area. And they are going to be making some additional improvements as they get the funding for it. Right now, you have to go next door to the center beside it for restrooms. But, the track itself is wonderful. They had some races there yesterday, along with all sorts of grand opening festivities. And it's one of those things that we can get together as a community, both sides of the state line, and celebrate each other. Also, part of the meeting that we had earlier at 5:00 o'clock, we were discussing improvements on West State Street. I know a lot of people are annoyed sometimes with the lane arrangement where the turning lanes aren't always as clear as they could be. But, we're working on plans to straighten some of that out, make things a little bit easier, which will be important as we have more and more visitors coming in in the near future on a regular basis, not just the seasonal ones. But, we're likely to have large numbers of visitors very shortly on an every-week basis. And we want to do whatever we can to be ready for that.
I had one additional thing, Madam Mayor, I apologize. Was not thinking earlier. Do want to congratulate the Birthplace Country Music Museum. They celebrated 10 years of being open this past week. A Smithsonian affiliate, they do a phenomenal job representing, preserving, advocating for our musical heritage. After all, this is where country music started, where genre started. It's just amazing the impact that that session had. So, if you haven't been to the museum, check it out. 10 years old. They know what they're doing. So, it's great.
Yeah. Thank you to the Vice Mayor for pointing that out. We were at that event the other night and it was fantastic and really exciting. It took so long to get that museum and to get that Birthplace of Country Music designated for Bristol. So, it is a big deal. So, we're really excited about that 10th anniversary. We'll move in now to, yes, go ahead, I'm sorry. And Councilmember Osborne is going to be joining us by phone tonight.
Well, thank you. Yes, well, yeah, it's on time. Before I went, I wanted to know to be particularly middle school boys football team. You know, I think high school gets a lot of attention, but the middle schoolers played really well against Tony Kers. They didn't quite, and they became, they've got a really good running game. I'm very proud of the, very proud of them.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move now into city managers' comments.
Yes, Council, just a few comments. Just would like to remind everyone that city offices will be closed on Monday, September 2nd for Labor Day. If your waste is supposed to be picked up on Monday, September 2nd, it will now be picked up on Tuesday, September the 3rd. So, please have your Monday waste containers out on Tuesday morning by 6:30 AM. The city of Bristol, Virginia is nearing the final stages of updating its comprehensive plan, which will guide our community's long-term vision and aspirations. We invite you to take a look at the draft plan on our website at bristlforward.com. If you have any comments or questions about the plan, please feel free to reach out to either myself or Jay Dietrich, our community development director, about those questions or comments so that we can help you with that. And finally, September is a busy month for events in Bristol. We have Rhythm and Roots and the NASCAR race coming up. I want to thank all of our first responders and our public works department and other staff members who do so much work to make sure these events come off without a hitch, without our staff preparing our city for these events. And without many people knowing what they do, these events would not happen as smoothly as they do.
All right, thank you. Looking for an adoption of agenda?
I move the adoption of the agenda as presented with one correction. I would like to take item D6 and postpone that indefinitely.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by the Vice Mayor to postpone indefinitely item number D6. And we have a second. Tenille, please call the roll. Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes.
All right, moving into the regular agenda. Number one, a resolution of endorsement and support for an application of state streets and roads for all SS4A grant funding. I think Mr. Chandler's here to give us a staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. City staff are developing a request for proposals to seek a consultant to assist the city with preparation of an ADA transition plan. The city is committed to keeping transportation systems, city facilities, and programs accessible to all, including Americans with disabilities. City staff proposes to apply for grants to leverage federal funding to prioritize the reduction and elimination of inaccessible pedestrian facilities in the public right-of-way and within city's facilities and programs. Once completed, the ADA transition plan will assist staff in targeting improvements to the city's transportation systems, city facilities, and programs. Staff recommends that the city council support the resolution for the grant funding application.
All right. We are now moving into a council motion and second.
I move that we approve the resolution of endorsement and support for an application for safe streets and roads for all, the grant funding.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any council discussion?
I think this is a good thing. It's exciting.
Well, you know, those who have attended regularly and the council know that I push for safe walkability. And this is one of those arrangements where we can make some improvements for pedestrian safety, vehicle safety. And it's funded by sources that we don't have to pay for directly.
Thank you to city staff for putting this together.
Thank you.
Yep, I'll just add, thank you for the work you've done on this. We certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, with no further discussion, Tenille, please call the roll. Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes. Next item on the agenda, UPC 105309- Lee Highway Widening Phase 1B Construction Award Contract. And I'm looking at Mr. Chandler for a staff report on that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city issued the invitation to bid for the Lee Highway Widening Phase 1B on June 7th, 2024 at 11:00 AM and closed the receiving of bids on June 28th, 2024 at 1400 local time. The invitation to bid was posted on the city's website and on the state of Virginia's online electronic procurement system, EVA. Two bids were received with WL Construction and Paving Incorporated being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. VDOT has also concurred with the bid and provided the city an authorization to award the contract on August 7th, 2024. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with WL Construction and Paving Incorporated for the construction of UPC 105309, Lee Highway Widening Phase 1B Construction Project, not to exceed $6,166,368.39.
All right, thank you. Looking for a council motion and second?
I'll go ahead and make that motion for us to authorize the city manager to execute that contract as stated.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any council discussion?
I think WNL has a reputation of doing a lot of paving projects and they were the lowest bidder, which we're required to take by law. So, that'll be good.
It's good when the low bidder is also somebody that we know does a good job.
All right, with no further discussion, Tenille, please call the roll. Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne? Did we lose him?
Tenille?
Yes.
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes. All right, next item on the agenda, Harding Wood Road and Reedy Creek Road Boundary Line Adjustment. Looking at, you've got all kinds of reports tonight, Jake.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The property owner at the intersection of Harley Wood Road and Reedy Creek Road desires to construct a home on their property. In order to provide a safe driveway access, the property owner contacted staff regarding the ability to obtain a portion of the city's property. After assessing their request, staff determined if the property owner conveyed a portion of their property in return for a portion of the city's property, both parties would mutually benefit from the property conveyance. The property that the city would accept gives the city a 30-foot right-of-way width measured from the center line of the street of Harley Wood Road and Reedy Creek Road. Ultimately, for future roadway improvements, the city would need an approximate 60-foot right-of-way or 30-foot from the center line of the street on both sides of the street. Staff recommends that the city council authorize adjustments to the boundary lines of city property.
All right, thank you. Looking for a motion and a second?
So, move?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Council discussion?
There are some times that the city is able to come up with a win-win. This is one of those. The, at some point in the past, and we don't know exactly what was going on because it was a long time before we were here, the layout of the rights of way appears to have been done in straight lines. Well, the road, as it is now, is curved. That wound up where the city owns some property that is perfectly usable by the owner of one of the lots. And the city right-of-way is narrower than it really should be for that size of the road, which would greatly reduce our ability to potentially widen it later on. Well, we're able to swap the property that the city doesn't need for property that the city does, can eventually use. And likewise, the property owner is swapping some property that they really can't use anyway for property that they can very much use. So, it's a win-win. And I like it when the city staff is able to wind up with those kind of arrangements.
Yes, I agree. All right, with no further discussion, Tenille, please call the roll. Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes. Next, approval of performance agreement for 601 State Street. Staff report by Ms. Reed.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. The city has been in discussions with a new business to open and operate at 601 State Street in Bristol, Virginia, which is the former location of the Bloom Restaurant. The potential new tenant is asking for an economic incentive from our no-net loss rebate totaling $100,000 over the course of two years, whichever comes first. So, if the $100,000 is met within 18 months, the agreement would end at that time. Staff recommends awarding an economic incentive of $100,000 from our no-net loss rebate incentives to the new business opening on State Street in Bristol, Virginia.
All right, looking for a motion and a second?
I move for approval of the performance agreement as stated.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Council discussion?
I just wanted to say I'm excited. I think it's a net gain for the city. It means a building that has been empty is occupied with something new. And we always love when something new comes downtown and it's new jobs and it's additional tax revenues, then we're collecting now.
We've had some businesses in the city sit vacant for a long time. And this is an opportunity where we can have a business in there that people will recognize their name. It's in the agenda packet. And it's something that will generate some positive publicity. And it's something that keeps us with inertia, keeping things moving. And it doesn't ultimately cost us anything, especially if you consider the alternative is that the building sits vacant for longer.
I'll just add too, the folks, as Mr. Pollard mentioned, they, they're a well-known organization, the French Magnolia. They have a TV show on PBS. They have a following. It sounds like they've won some awards with that. I know when the Ken Burns documentary aired, it brought in a ton of people to Bristol to see the museum, to see the history. So, having that TV connection is definitely a good connection. I do have one question for Mr. Eads on this. This setup for this agreement, this rebate, this is in line with the IDA framework they provided. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
And IDA has approved this as well.
Yeah, I'll just add, I think this is a win for the city. To have a restaurant like this, going into that beautiful property that's vacant, it's a huge win. And so, it's no money out of our pockets upfront. And it's certainly going to help bring in more business and more folks to downtown. So, I think it is a huge win for us and I'm really excited for this to happen. All right, with no further discussion, Tenille, please call the roll. Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes. Next item on the agenda, supplemental appropriation for $836,963. Staff report, Ms. Bradlin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. This item is a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $836,963. First are the carryover items for the general fund. Police Department unexpended donations of $13,999. Fire Department unexpended FY24 insurance proceeds of $18,413. The City Sheriff Department unexpended donations of $12,500. Also, in the Sheriff's Department, unexpended project lifesaver funds of $1,212. Street and Engineering Division, unexpended stormwater funds of $791. Clear Creek Golf Course, unexpended revenue, $141,200. Planning and Community Development, carryover funds for the comprehensive plan of $79,015. And Washington County Revenue Sharing, unexpended payments of $153,250. For total general fund carryover of $420,380. The general fund non-carryover items, Police Department current year donations, $3,000. Also, in the Police Department, insurance proceeds for a vehicle damaged, $10,225. Street and Engineering Division, VDOT primary extension program funds of $252,000. For total non-carryover for our general fund of $265,225. Our other funds, local funded capital projects fund, roll beginning balance there of $38,508 to cover an item that was ordered early last year, but that was not received by June 30th. Commonwealth Attorney Federal Revenue Fund, roll that beginning balance there of $23,159. Our flexible spending account fund, to carry over that beginning balance there, $4,344 additional dollars there. An asset forfeiture fund, the beginning balance, additional monies, $85,347. For the grand total supplemental appropriation, as mentioned earlier, of $836,963. And staff does recommend that council approve this supplemental appropriation as listed.
Great, thank you, Ms. Bradlin. Looking for a motion and second?
I move the approval of the supplemental appropriation as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any council discussion?
I guess I just want to express my appreciation for the city staff, the financial department, for giving us these great reports, a great summary, great information, and working out how to handle things in a way that is relatively straightforward, even though it is somewhat complicated, and in accordance with both code and best practice.
All right, thank you. All right, Tenille, please call the roll. Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes. All right, moving into item E1 on the agenda, ordinance approving and authorizing the sale of property owned by the city of Bristol, Virginia. We do have one person signed up for public comment in that section, and that is Roberta Nickelton. Did I say that right? If you want to come forward and state your name and address. And you will have three minutes for comments. You will get a warning light, and then the red light means your time is up. Welcome.
I'm Roberta Nickelam. I live at 351 Arlington Avenue, right on the other side of Washington Lee. I don't really have anything to say. I just wanted to be able to ask questions.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, staff report, Ms. Reed.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. The Department of Economic Development put out requests for information on three vacant schools, Washington and Lee, Highland View, and Stonewall Jackson on March 21st, 2024. Five proposals were received by the June 28th, 24 deadline. We had two proposals on Stonewall Jackson, one proposal from Old School, One LLC. They offered $150,000. And the plan would be to put a boutique hotel and condos into that facility and on that property. Ballad Health placed a proposal as well. They would do a daycare center and they made an offer of $0 for the property. Washington and Lee, Old School Two LLC placed a bid in for the property of $150,000. They would redevelop that into residential use in the future. And Ballad Health also submitted a proposal as well, which they would do a daycare center at Washington and Lee, and they offered $0. at Washington and Lee, and they offered $0 for Washington and Lee. Also, the Police Department offered a bid on Washington and Lee as well to turn that into a training facility. They offered $0 for their bid as well. And we did not receive any bids for Stonewall Jackson. We are continually trying to market-
We did receive one for Stonewall-
I'm sorry, yes.
Yep.
For Highland View. We are continually trying to market Highland View and continue to do so. These are economic development projects. And based on the fact these are properties are being sold for economic development, it does require a 5-0 vote tonight in order to pass. That is simply would allow us to do the proposal as we did with the RFI being proposed for almost three months.
All right, thank you, Mr. Eads. I'm looking for a council motion in a second for the first reading of the ordinance full or by caption only.
I move for first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
And council, I should say, staff recommends that the schools go with Old School One and Old School Two LLC proposals for $150,000 for each one of those schools.
All right, thank you for that. We have a motion in a second, and we'll move into council discussion. And, yes, ma'am?
This is one I would like to ask a question of. Residential use in the future, what exactly do they mean by residential use?
We have in their proposal, as far as residential use, I think it would be, and I will clarify with the city manager, but it looks like condos or some type of housing in that area. However, it would not be considered low-income housing.
Okay. I just want to know, since the problem with the school and the reason that it's no longer being used as the school is because it was too hard to upkeep because of the caves underneath it, what makes that a good place to build anything?
You know, that's something the developer, as he goes through his process and due diligence, he will have to determine whether or not that's an appropriate place to build.
And $150,000 sounds like a pittance for that amount of land. That's my opinion.
We've had this out for bid for some time. And so we did receive two bids on the property, and one of them was for $0 that they wanted it. So it is an amount, while it does seem minimal, I feel like it is an opportunity to have something nice in there. We definitely don't want things sitting vacant, which is what our concern would be if no one bid on them and they sit there. Because we know from past history what happens when buildings just sit vacant. And so with the ones that put a bid on this, I wouldn't expect anything less than something very nice and very well done.
And I'd just like to say I'm encouraged that there is interest in a couple of the properties. And just for the record, obviously, you already mentioned, Mr. City Manager, that we're still going to be marketing Highland View. Not really sure what exactly will transpire there, because essentially, we receive no offers, even for $0. It's almost like we can't give it away. There's already a nice softball field there. Maybe that becomes, maybe it continues to stay a city property. And I'm not sure what happens with the actual building. But for the neighborhood there, obviously, the softball field, the playground is, maybe there's opportunities for improvement or redevelopment there in the future for some nice, more, you know, green space. Obviously, we don't want to lose any softball field or anything there. But, yeah, it's something we'll keep working on with that property.
I would just like to add too, this was, as Mayor Knave said, this was marketed for a while. I think it was, I don't know how many websites or how the marketing was done, but it was extensive. I know that. Mr. Eads, you may want to expand upon that.
Sure. You know, one thing that we did put this on, we put it on the state's website, which is called Eva, where developers are looking all the time for opportunities to develop property or to other opportunities that localities in the state offer for developers. So it was placed on Eva for that review as well. And it goes to developers all across the nation who happen to sign up for notices from Eva. Our Economic Development Department did advertise it on our city website, and then also worked in conjunction with other realtors in the area to get the word out in regards to the proposal as well. I know Mr. Chapman worked extensively to try to get as many bids as he could for these properties and to get the highest and best use that he could as well. And unfortunately, this is the proposals that we received. I think we're fortunate in the sense that we did receive proposals, as if we did not receive any proposals, those buildings would still be sitting empty, and we would still be trying to figure out how to take care of the buildings and to prevent some of the blight that goes along with vacant buildings from happening at those locations.
Go ahead. Sorry, I would also like to add too, shifting gears a little bit. Give me just a second here. With this, with decisions on council, like you've got away, as an individual, you've got away your personal needs against the city, and you've got to go with the city stuff. So coming into this, I live very close to the Washington and Lee school. And so coming into this, I was making sure that my head was in the right space. Thankfully, looking at this proposal, there was no conflict. There was no reason to have to weigh one against the other, because I do think these projects, the Stonewall Jackson, the Washington and Lee, are going to be very beneficial to our community. We're in a severe lack of housing. The folks, as Mayor Knave said, behind this have a proven track record. We see this need. We see this kind of combination of things falling into place. I do appreciate the concern. I do understand with your back door, basically, to it, that there is some apprehension. I appreciate that. But I do think this is a good move for all involved. And with the extended time that it was advertised, with us getting some funding or some, an offer of funding for this, especially with the schools and the age they are, this is, I think, just a win-win all around.
There is a saying that something is only worth as much as what somebody is willing to pay for it. In this case, the $150,000, while we may think that it's low, is the most that somebody was willing to pay for it. And it is more than what the land is assessed for. And they, the developer, the purchaser, will be incentivized to do something with it, to do something productive with it, because as soon as they buy it, they're going to be on the hook for the real estate taxes for it.
I really think, and I know I've talked to several of you all who live in that neighborhood, and I was really pleased with who came in to see this developer in here, or developers, because Mr. Stacy is a long-term developer and community and economic development supporter in our region, as well as Mr. Byrne, who's been a longtime developer of commercial real estate and big projects. And I will say, everything I've seen them do has been top-notch. And we could look at, you know, look at what happened, and the city's never owned the VI property. It was owned, you know, by the bank, and the bank sold it to someone in China. And we know what we're dealing with now with that. And so we did have a choice in what we wanted to do and who to sell this property to. So I'm really thankful that it is two local developers who do great projects and want to keep the value of the community, knows that community well, and wants to make sure that it is something that the neighborhood is going to embrace.
Well, I want to just say that right now, Washington Lee's playground, the kids used to look over the fence into our parking lot. If you have multi-story buildings-
We're going to have no privacy whatsoever. Is there any recourse for us to be part of the design so that we don't have people looking in our windows all the time?
And I'm not sure of what that design looks like, and I'm not sure how that would work. Mr. Eads, any opinion on that?
The design has not been submitted at this point. And, you know, as a property owner in the City of Bristol, if you have concerns in regards to something going on adjacent to your property, then you have legal recourse that you can take and hire an attorney to look into that matter for you.
And we have done-
If you have that money.
We have done some projects before where we have required a developer of some sort, depending on wherever the property is or what is next to, to have some type of, we'll call it a buffer, maybe like screening, maybe it's not a fence or shrubbery, but some type of screening. I know we did something like that recently near Exit 7, when there was a, it was actually a business property next to some residential. So it may be a while before there's any really concrete plans and blueprints and models for what he-
How will we find out and what has every season?
Well, one question, I think I also have two, is about the zoning. That may be something, I'm assuming it's a residential zoning now, but if he's wanting to do a lot of multifamily, I don't know if he'd have to go from R1 to R2 or R2 to R3. So maybe if there's any kind of rezoning request, that would come up again in the future, where we could look at that to protect the neighbors around too.
It's currently zoned R1, and that only allows a single-family residence, which means that Mr. Chandler could give details about what is and isn't allowed in R1. But what they're proposing would not be allowed in R1, which means they're going to ask for a rezoning. And that is a very public process, and you'll know what they've got in mind.
Yep.
Yep. All right, any further discussion? All right, Tanil, please call the roll. Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes.
Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance 24 hyphen 14, and the ordinance approving and authorizing the sale of property owned by the City of Bristol, Virginia.
All right, moving into the next, ordinance second reading, and ordinance to amend Section 74-8 to Chapter 74, Article 1 of the City Code pertaining to camping on public sidewalks and right-of-way within the city. We do have some people signed up for public comment. As I said before, when I call your name, please come up, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes. There will be three lights that come on, and when you see the yellow light, that means you should wrap up, and the red light means your time is up. First on the list, I have Lynn Hamby.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Bristol, Virginia City Council, as you consider the ordinance review tonight, I urge you to approach this matter with compassion and humanity. The current discourse suggests an increase in penalties for public camping, which could escalate the challenges faced by individuals who, due to circumstances often beyond their control, find themselves without shelter. Upgrading the misdemeanor class for camping on public property to a Class 1 misdemeanor is excessively punitive. It does not offer a solution to the underlying issue of homelessness. Instead, it could lead to increased jail populations and strain on municipal resources, as those unable to afford fines may face incarceration. In the spirit of community and understanding, we must consider alternatives that does not criminalize poverty, but instead focus on long-term solutions with emphasis on treating the homeless with dignity and respect and recognizing them as members of the community who require assistance rather than punishment. Our policies should reflect empathy and a commitment to social justice, rather than enforcing measures that may only serve to further degrade the current challenges they face. Public policy should also reflect a commitment to compassion and dignity for all citizens. Ordinances and regulations need to be crafted in a way that they do not criminalize homelessness, but rather offer pathways to stability and support. Striking a balance between public safety and compassion involves a multifaceted approach that considers the needs and the rights of all community members. It requires the implementation of policies that protect the well-being of the public while also providing support and resources to those in need. It's been my privilege over the last several months to interact with the unhoused, listening to their personal stories, helping one individual get settled in her own apartment with assistance from others. I've witnessed multiple individuals that come from our community. They come out to help these people. I've spoken with business owners who expressed concern in regard to the plight of these individuals. I implore you to consider the implementations of this ordinance, not just as a legal matter, but as a reflection of our values as a community. Let us not be remembered for how we penalize those in need, but for how we uplift and support them. As we move forward, let our actions be guided by empathy and a genuine desire to improve the lives of all the citizens in Bristol, Virginia. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next on the list, George Armstrong.
I want to ask you a question, and you a question. How is it against the law to sleep outside in a state you were raised in? How is that even possible in America, for an American to sleep outside under God's light? What's up? Is that what we're coming to? I'm out here because of choice. I choose to be out here. I'm not, I don't need the government to hold my hand. I'm charity. That's all I got to say.
All right, thank you. Next on the list, Cheryl Hanslick.
So when I review what you're proposing, I can't find one reason to do it. I can't play devil's advocate and get in your brain and say, this is a good idea. I can tell you a lot of reasons why it's a lousy idea. The people that you are targeting, they're already in the gutter. And you're not going to give them a leg up. You're going to kick them, you're going to kick them down. And going to the logical conclusion of what would happen to this individual, they'd end up with a $2,500 fine they cannot pay. They'd end up incarcerated for a year, and somebody's going to pay the $89,000 average cost. It's 86 in southwest Virginia, you save $3,000. And you pretty much have ruined this person's life forever if you indeed do this. So I was told there's a thought that if you do this, people won't come and become homeless in Bristol, Virginia. Well, I got to tell you, I interviewed 40 to 50 people. They're not coming from somewhere else. They're here. They're us. They're us that have run into a hard time. And I think part of it, it's easier to have them, there's someone that comes in on a bus and actually gets dropped off at the Greyhound station that doesn't exist anymore? How's that work? Maybe it makes you feel good, like there's somewhere, somewhere else that's not touching you, and you might not be the next homeless. And I came, I immigrated to here from 700 miles away, and I love the southern charm, the southern care and concern for fellow human beings. And as a taxpayer, that's what I want to pay for. I don't want to pay to ruin someone's life. And if you all want to do it, go ahead, but don't put it on me. And I feel sorry for the police officers that are going to have to go ahead and take someone who has nowhere else to sleep, nowhere else to be, and actually is here because they were born and raised here, or maybe came from a little bit away, and know that there are services in Bristol, Tennessee that actually help these people get off the street, and I've seen it. They get an apartment, they get a job, they go back into a stable environment. Why don't we think about spending that $90,000 that I don't know who's going to pay for to take care of the people here? And I'm willing to help. I just only have a small group of people, mostly in Bristol, Tennessee, and I got to go, what's Bristol, Virginia doing? Either they're not doing anything, or they're not talking about it. So I just think you're going in the wrong direction. There's no upside at all to what you're doing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next on the list, Sam Davis.
My name's Samuel Davis. I live on 248 Spurgeon Lane. There used to be an old saying, you can't stand in the way of progress. And we can't go back to the 1900s with vagrancy laws and fossil fuels. A futuristic socialist utopia is progress. That's the way the Spanish-American War veterans and Teddy Roosevelt described it. The middle class can't help the needy. Jesus has- Jesus has proven unable to help the needy. Even their family members and parents are unable to help the needy. And government programs that do help the needy are not always available. Hollywood slum lords are only out to squeeze every rupee they can get out of the poor in government programs that help the homeless. What the homeless need is easily accessible habitat and easily accessible source of income. An RV park where they can park their car or pitch a tent, and migratory farm work. Making bulk animal feed that feed our people, farm animals, and hybrid cars. Why reforest with trees that only feed the bark beetles when you can reforest with trees that provide jobs for the homeless and feed our people, the animals, and our cars? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right. Moving into staff report, Mr. Eads.
Counsel, you have before you the second reading of an ordinance to amend section 74 hyphen eight to chapter 74, Article One of the City Code pertaining to camping on public sidewalks and rights of ways within the city. This section would be added to the City Code, or this section was previously added to the City Code in August of 2022. In light of the U.S. Supreme Court's most recent ruling, the U.S. Supreme Court has stated that localities do have the ability to enact codes that prevent people from camping on public property. And this code tonight would allow our police officers an opportunity to help and assist other people when in need and when they want help. And for the ones who are not seeking help, it gives them a tool in the toolbox to deal with them in some form or fashion.
All right. Thank you. We are looking for a council motion and second for the second reading, full or by caption.
I move for a second reading of this. Sorry, Mr. Osborne, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I move, I move that we postpone this until September 10th.
All right. We have a motion. Anyone want a second?
I'll second that.
To move it to September 10th? All right. We can vote on this one now. So, Tenille, please call the roll.
Farnham.
No.
Holmes.
No.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
No. All right. We are looking for a council motion and second for the second reading, full or by caption.
Madam Mayor, I move for a second reading of this ordinance by caption only.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We'll open this up for council discussion.
I recently spoke with a representative of one of our local shelters. For those who want shelter, our local shelter options are currently stretched past to being thin. They don't have resources. They help who they can, but they have to turn away people every night because they don't have the room. For those who choose to live outdoors, as one of the gentlemen here tonight spoke, there are no legal options. In my opinion, this will largely push those who are trying to stay out from underfoot as much as possible. It'll push them from city property to private property. People have talked about all the problems that are associated with homelessness, such as the litter, drug paraphernalia and what have you. I would tend to guess that most people who live here would rather find, let's put it like it is, beer bottles and, and drug needles on a piece of city property that is not a city park, rather than in their own backyards. So I'm planning to meet with a representative of United Way to see what other options we may have, but that's not scheduled for another couple of weeks. And I would like to see additional options before we, well, criminalize it, living outdoors on city property. Now, if somebody wants to buy their own property, they could do that, but somebody who, many of those who are living outdoors don't have those resources.
All right. I have a, a random question that popped in my head when Mr. Pollard was speaking. Would, would there be a way for a private individual to offer their property up to, to let folks stay there? Is that a possibility?
You, no. Zoning regulations would not allow a campground for that. I think there's only one campground authorized in the city, and that's at Sugar Hall Park.
Which is rented ahead of time per space? So they could camp there? They just have to rent the spaces?
We don't allow tent camping anymore, simply because of issues that we've had in the past with people camping in tents. So people have to have an RV in order to camp there. The only time we allow tent camping is for race weekend and for Rhythm and Roots Weekend.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
I'm going to jump in. You all hear me all right?
Yes.
So, you know, I realize, hold on a minute, we're going to pass, but, you know, just because we can do a thing does not mean we, you know, we are essentially going to criminalize people who are at the lowest point probably in their life. And I have, I've yet to receive an explanation for why they rushed to do this, why we're in such a hurry to do it, why we're not looking further on. You know, we're, we're essentially going to create more problems for ourselves than we solve. Because Pollard said, these people are either going to continue to camp on public property, or, and they're going to, they're going to get arrested. We're going to have to pay for them to be incarcerated. They're going to have a record for the rest of their life. Or they're going to move to private property and they're going to get trespassing charged. So I don't understand what the reasoning is to do this without providing other options. As I say, I know that this is about to pass, but that is, that's what I have to say.
Well, I do feel there are, I do feel there, we do have a ton of resources. And when, I did reach out and did pull them up from United Way and other organizations from Bristol Faith in Action, Haven of Rest, Salvation Army, People Inc., Upper East Tennessee Development Agency, Family Promise of Bristol, Bristol Redevelopment and Housing Authority, the Envision Center, Bristol, Tennessee Housing Authority, if it's mental health, Frontier Health, Highlands Community Services. For food, you got the Bristol Emergency Food Pantry, Salvation Army, Haven of Rest, Sharing Christ Ministries, and the list goes on. We've also put together something to have this list handy. And then also, how to go about reporting these issues or any issues you may have to the police department. I don't think the idea is that we're just going to go out here when this is, when the ordinance goes into effect and start just arresting people left and right. But it gives our police officers a tool to help move people along should they need to, because right now, they really do, cannot do anything if they're doing drugs or other things are going on. We do have also a lot of job openings in the city. So we have been active in saying we have job openings. The casino has ran several days of a job fair where you can get a job there. And a lot of people will say, you know, I have felonies. I can't work there. Now, you can't work in the casino part, but you can work at the hotel, at the Hard Rock Hotel. They will hire you if you are a felon or if you have a background, as long as it's nonviolent. When I was checking with them. So there's opportunities out here for jobs. We're not out here to just arrest a bunch of people and put them in jail. We are just trying to, we have listened to the multiple calls, multiple meetings with our business owners, not only downtown, but across the city. We have listened to our police department and our fire departments who have had to go on numerous calls that take them away from other, other duties they should be doing. And so when you're talking about the cost and what it costs to, you know, arrest somebody and take them to jail, you got to weigh that in and look at the number of calls that our police and fire are going on a week. And I was even told, a lot of times, they take two vehicles, or two of them will come to a call because they're not sure of the risks that they're going to be up against. And so I think when you look at the cost, it may cut down on cost if we've got a tool that we can, can use, and if we can work with them in providing them the resources, working with them. We don't want anyone to be homeless or to be out of a job. So we want to make sure we have the jobs available. We want to make sure we can get people, help them get a job, help them get back on their feet, because we certainly want Bristol to be a thriving community, and we want everyone, we're, we're here to support everyone.
I'd like to.
Would you like to sign up for a comment? And I would allow it.
Yeah, please.
If you want to come to the podium and state your name and address, please. And in the future, we do have a procedure to do this.
My name is Angela Smallwood, and my address is 603 Rose Street, Apartment Six, Bristol, Tennessee. I am now housed, but I was currently, two months ago, I was homeless. I was homeless for almost three years. And Bristol, Virginia did absolutely nothing to help me. None of the agencies in Bristol, Virginia helped me. I ended up having to go to the Salvation Army, to Family Promise on the Tennessee side before I got help. And it still took almost two years before they were able to get me housed. Yes, there are jobs out here, but here's the problem. Most of the employers do not want to hire anybody that is homeless because we are considered unreliable, because we have no home. We have no way to take a shower. We have no way of being able to charge our phones or have alarm clocks. So therefore, they can't say for sure that we would be to work. So 90% of the time, we do not get jobs. So that is an unfair statement to sit and say, oh, well, there's lots of jobs. So, you know, all you got to do, all you got to do is go out and get them. That is not the case, because I see people out here every single day fighting to get off of the street and can't. I know people that have worked two jobs for the last two years and still cannot get off of the street. And do you know why? Because we are not getting that hand up and out of homelessness that we need. We need that help. And if we're not getting the help on the Virginia side, because there is no shelters on the Virginia side. There's absolutely no shelters. And as far as like Faith in Action and all of these other agencies, do you want to know what the cycle is here? Here's the cycle. You call Faith in Action to get help with an electric bill or your first month's rent if you have your deposit. You know what happens? Oh, I'm sorry, but we had to divert our funds to People Incorporated, call them. So then you call People Incorporated. They had to divert their funds to somebody else. So they tell you to call them. So you go through this big, long vicious cycle to get to a church. And then the church says, oh, well, no, you got, we diverted our funds to this church. And it ends up going all the way around, full circle, back to Faith in Action. And nobody has any funds because everybody has diverted their funds to somewhere else, but still none of these agencies have funds to help. I have firsthand dealt with this. It's easy when you're sitting there in, in your own home, getting paid by the city, whatever, or, you know, working your butt off. But I didn't choose to become homeless. I was hoping my daughter and my grandson to not become homeless. And I ended up making an ultimate sacrifice. So my daughter wouldn't have to sit out here on the street with her child and feel like a failure. It wasn't by my choice. It was the way things happened. But then I didn't get any help. I didn't get any support from my lovely city of Bristol. I was told I was dirty, and I was trash, and I was garbage. I had a lady tell me to go kill myself because I was homeless. I didn't deserve to be treated like that. And nobody out here on these streets deserved to be treated like that. And do you want to know what the national average is before somebody becomes homeless? One paycheck. One paycheck is the national average. You miss one paycheck, you're very liable to be out on the street. And that goes for everybody, not just a certain select. That's everybody. And nobody takes that into consideration, that one day it could be you. So if you're going to offer help, offer valuable help. Offer something that is viable, because right now, we're not getting it. Not on the Virginia side. And I beg you, please, help us instead of criminalizing us, because we don't deserve it. We're trying and we're fighting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Nave, I'd like to, thank you for sharing your story. I, I do want to add that resource Bristol through the United Way is a good conglomeration of all the resources in the area, both sides of the state line. I would recommend folks starting there. They can point you in the right direction. And instead of that runaround, they can kind of point you where you need to go. We have, we have info cards for them. I'm going to pass them out to the council members, so we all have them. I'd like to get these in the hands of our officers, if that's appropriate. We have some also in Spanish as well, so we can hopefully help as many people as possible with that.
Yeah, I think that's a, a great thing that the Vice Mayor has, came up with. He has these cards, so you're not running around like she was to all the different resources. This will be in the hands of our officers, be in the hands of any of the community members to where you can and you're able to, to call this one number for the United Way, and then they can make that connection and resource for you and with you. And so thank you for coming up with this idea for the cards and for doing that.
Counsel, I need to interrupt here at this time. There has not been a motion and a second for the reading. We had the motion, which was denied to postpone, but there was not a motion and a second that I recall.
Yes, we did. We had a motion and a second by caption, and then went into council discussion.
My bad.
Which is where we're at. Yes.
May I speak? I've never been here before, and I didn't know what to do.
Are you, are you speaking on the matter that we're discussing at this moment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I will allow it this time, but in the future, fill out a form. And she'll give you one to fill out anyway, because we keep a record of this. And, yep, thank you. And if you will state your name and address, you have three minutes, and the green light is on.
Okay. My name is Robin Ryan, and I volunteer at a homeless mission. It's Proverbs, and it's with the United Methodist Churches. Several of them sponsor this mission. Two weeks ago, we're only open on Mondays and Fridays, and we feed them lunch and breakfast. Two weeks ago, we had over 70 people for breakfast and lunch. That's the most we've ever had. Two years ago, it was about 30. It's out of hand. There is help in Bristol. There's a lot of help in Bristol for the homeless. The only thing, it takes, it's a huge process. And if you apply for HUD, that's almost a two-year waiting list. And they'll tell you what number you are. You're probably number 380 out of 1,000. But there, there are resources, and, and our mission helps with that. We start them on the process. We tell them where to go for what they need. And about the job situation, there are tons of jobs. We have lists of jobs, people that are hiring. The only problem with that is they don't even have a drawer to put their personal belongings in. There's no way they could have a job. First of all, it's on the bus line, which we do give bus passes. The buses don't run on Saturday and Sunday. And a lot of these jobs are after hours. And a lot of these jobs are after hours or at night. So that's why you see people walking. A lot of times, they are working, but it's hard on them. I just don't want you to throw these people away. When I saw a homeless person, I used to turn my head because I didn't want them to look at my face. But now, when I see a homeless person, I hug them. And I know, and I reassure them that we can help. And we absolutely can. Every Friday at our mission, Highlands Community Services comes to Proverbs Mission. And we help people in whatever they might need that Highlands can help them with. And we're doing everything we can to keep them safe, number one. And number two, find them housing as fast as we can. There is no solution out there. We've been talking about this for several years. And I don't have a solution, but wouldn't it be great if Bristol, Virginia could have the solution for the homeless situation? We could be a model for that. We just don't know what to do. I don't. I pastor.
Thank you.
Carolyn? I have to stop. Sorry. But anyway, come see me at Proverbs Mission on Harland Street, right off Puculod Avenue.
Thank you.
I've got a couple more comments real quick. I apologize. I would like to point out Resource Bristol, yet again, they have a program called Ride United that they, for those off-hours, those times that Bristol Transit doesn't run, they can provide an Uber or a Lyft. I'm not sure. I think, I think we have both right now. So they do have a grant for that. They've had that for, I think, two years now, something like that. So that is, that is a good resource. And I'll give you some cards, too, that'd be good. And then I do want to tell you about another grant. Ma'am, I forgot, I didn't catch your last name, but you mentioned Highlands Community Services. They did receive a grant for a homeless resource van. I'm not sure what the title's going to be, but it's for their whole service territory, which is Bristol and Washington County. It's going to be five days a week downtown, providing resources. Not every day, but it's, it's more than we have now. So there are more resources coming on that front, too. So I'm looking forward to seeing how that unfolds and how that can help folks.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? All right, Tenille, please call the roll. Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
No.
Pollard?
No.
Knave?
Yes.
Reading of ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance 24 hyphen 13 and an ordinance to amend Section 74 hyphen eight to Chapter 74, Article 1 of the City Code pertaining to camping on public sidewalks and riot of ways within the city.
All right, and we're looking for a motion and second for adoption of the ordinance.
Madam Mayor, I move for adoption of this ordinance.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Tenille, please call the roll. Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
No.
Pollard?
No.
Knave?
Yes.
All right, next, matters to be presented by members of the public for non-agenda items. We have no one signed up for that section. Moving into the consent agenda, looking for a motion and a second.
I move the approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Tenille, please call the roll. Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes.
Next, we'll move for, look for a council motion and second for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, Tenille, please call the roll. Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes.
All right, with no further business, we stand adjourned.